Regent Call City Council Meeting, six o'clock, Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five, Jasper City Hall, four sixty-five South Main Street. This meeting is now called to order. Can we have a prayer by Mr. LaLond Kyles?
Ballheads, to God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the things that you have given us. We ask that you would continue to crown our heads with wisdom, understanding, and guidance. We ask that you would continue to bless us, continue to strengthen us. God, you said that we are to pray and have prayers for those who govern and who rule over us. For God, we pray for them. We ask that you would continue to bless them, give them insight, understanding, and God, most of all, give them a sense of harmony amongst one another and amongst the community. We thank you for everything that you've done and everything you will do. It's in the gospel of Jesus. Thank you, Pastor. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Kyles. Next, we'll have information for council members, SRMPA and SETRPC. It is in your binders. And departmental reports. They give me departmental reports. Okay, next, we have two proclamations. First, we have a proclamation from the American Red Cross. Proclamation, this March, we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in the Jasper community and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. Since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than a hundred and forty years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis. Advancing this noble mission, the volunteers and supporters who now give back through the Southeast Deep East chapter remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. Their voluntary and generous contributions shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospitals, patients, supporting service members, veterans, and their families, saving lives with their first aid, CPR, AED, and other skills, or delivering international aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. This work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. We hereby recognize this month, March, in honor of their remarkable service, and we ask everyone to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Anderson Land, the city of Jasper, by virtue of this authority vested in me by the laws of Jasper, Texas, do hereby proclaim March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five as Red Cross Month and encourage, excuse me, and encourage all citizens of the Jasper community to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. In witness thereof, I have unto set my hand on this tenth day of March in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-five, and of Jasper, Texas. We have Ms. Kimberly Klein from the American Red Cross to come up, please. This proclamation is for Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas in federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services confirmed fifty-three thousand five hundred and forty-three victims of child abuse or neglect, including forty-six in Jasper County. Whereas our children are our most valuable resources and shape our future, and child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting every segment of our community and has long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims. Additionally, the impact of abuse and neglect has long-term personal, economic, and social costs, therefore hurting the future of our community. And whereas prevention remains the best defense of our children and families, and whereas finding solutions requires input and actions from everyone in our community, and we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and continue to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies, and volunteers. Communities must take, must make every effort to encourage volunteerism and promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. Whereas court-appointed special advocates, known as CASA, C-A-S-A, volunteers are assigned by the court to speak up for a child's best interest and help ensure a child's voice is heard. Every child in foster care deserves a CASA volunteer. But roughly less than half the children in care do not have a CASA volunteer. And whereas CASA of the Sabine Nature's Region Child Protective Services, Child Advocate Centers, foster parents, teachers, and other work to ensure, others work to ensure that children in our community have a safe, happy future. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Anderson Land, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and in the city of Jasper, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Do you have a representative for CASA, please?
Laurie, I'll present this proclamation to you from the city of Jasper.
Thank you.
Okay, no public comments, we'll move on. I just want to please understand that council cannot discuss any presented issues nor can it take any action on any issues at this time, except that a statement of fact, including policy, may be made if responsive to an issue. That's Attorney General's Opinion JC zero one six nine. Items for discussion and/or action. Consider for approval, two sets of minutes. Regular call City Council Meeting, February tenth, twenty twenty-five. City Council Workshop, February twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Samuels, second by Councilwoman McCroskey, Councilwoman McCroskey. Any further discussion on this matter? Can we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, you know. Item number two, Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission Public Transit Pilot Program for the city of Jasper. I had saw Mr. Bob Dickinson on this on last week, and I did ask him to come up to, uh, come up to Jasper to, uh, so we could let the public know a little bit more about this. Bob?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. My name is Bob Dickinson. I work for the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission. We've been working with the county and especially the mayor and with the city of Jasper to try to start a public transit pilot project here in the city of Jasper. Well, I was up here a week ago Thursday. Prior to that, I'd really been marketing my program and trying to make the citizens of the city aware of it. Well, last Friday morning, uh, at my office, my subcontractor that was going to do this pilot project for us was informed by their insurance, uh, people, their broker, that they had some issues with them expanding their coverage area. They'd done work for us down in Pardon, Jefferson, for many years. So anyway, so I talked to the mayor and Judge Allen, and I told him I didn't have any choice. I had Plan A. I had a perfect plan laid out to implement this service to start it last Monday, March the third. Well, I had to postpone it, so I called the judge and I called the mayor. I sent a news release out to KJAS, to the Chamber of Commerce, and to the religious radio station here, and to the other media outlets. So immediately, what I've been doing is working to identify a way to get this service started as soon as I can, but it just takes some time. I had Option A, and Option A was the way to do it based on the resources and days we had, so, you know, so I just had to postpone the implementation of the program, and I don't know exactly yet when I will be able to officially launch the program, but I hope it's as soon as I can. But that's all I can do right now. But what I'd like to do, sometimes, anytime you start something new, you're going to have some issues. I wish it hadn't have been this issue. I wish we'd have got it sorted, but it was beyond my control. We did what we could within the timeframe. So what I'm doing, like I said, I'm working with my folks down in the region, and I'm going to try to come up with something to get our program going as soon as we can. So that's my first. And so what I was going to do, as long as I was here, I was going to, if you allow me, I'll give a little overview of what we were looking to do.
Sure.
That's all right.
That way people know. Thanks, Bob.
So basically, what we were looking to do, we haven't had any type of public transportation services available up in Jasper County for, I don't think there's ever been. So I work with the Texas Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division. They have some funding called Service Expansion Program Funding, and I worked with them, and we secured some funding to try a pilot project just within the city of Jasper for the residents that live within the incorporated areas. So and basically, this program would be open to all citizens. You know, it's general purpose, demand response, service, curb-to-curb. Somebody would call to schedule a trip to go to work, to the doctor, to healthcare facilities, shopping to Walmart, uh, to go to the courthouse, the city hall, or whatever their transportation need might be, especially individuals with disabilities that might be confined to a wheelchair. The vehicles we will use in this program when we implement it will all be lift-equipped. And so the way it works, somebody would call ahead, at least forty-eight hours ahead of time, to schedule their trip. Our plan is to implement this program. When we implement it, it will be three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, from eight AM to four PM. And so like I said, in any way, it's open to everybody. It's general purpose pu- public transportation, but the farther ahead somebody calls, the sooner we can try to, you know, accommodate somebody, especially when you're starting something new. So, uh, you know, so that's where we are, you know? And in our affairs, we'd be very nominal, one fifty each way. Public transportation, whether it's rural or in the city, it's heavily subsidized by federal and state funds. That's what we were going to use in this pilot project here in the city of Jasper. Because I've used the term, we have to call before we walk. I think it'll be a good thing, once we get it going, to see what kind of demand or see the deeds in the community, to see what, to try to work on something longer term, but you have to start with something different. So that's why, you know, I hated to come up here. I was coming up here today initially to, to say how, how the program's going, but we've got a detour in the road, and I'm working on it, and as soon as I get that detour worked out, I'm going to come back and visit with you and tell you when we're going to launch this program. But I don't have a time today. That's just, I'm working on it diligently as we can, and I appreciate your patience. And in that handout I had, I just, just wanted to show, I have one of these, this was just a map we had done, uh, just to show some of the sample, they're in that package, but it's some of the sample destinations that folks that would utilize our pilot, uh, project and might need to go to here within the city. And this shows the city limits, and the program would be open to anybody that live within the incorporated limits of the city of Jasper. And so, anyway, I have a smaller one of that, uh, in the program. I thought I'd leave it, you might want to put this up or whatever, but, uh, anyway, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but I, 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 the last thing I was thinking, like I said, I was up here a week ago Thursday, and Friday morning, about ten o'clock, my subcontractor that, that was going to do this for us, their insurance agent got to them, I had a meeting with them Monday, and we're still trying to work on some things, but it just takes some time. When you had one plan worked out that, that was going to work good, so that's, that's my story, and I'll keep you informed as soon as I get something. I want to try to go as soon as we can, but I have to have, I have to have the right things come together, and I'm working on it, so.
Thank you, Bob. Council, you have any questions?
I would like to say that I'm on the board, um, at the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission. I was very excited about this program. I think it's going to be great for the citizens of Jasper. It's one of the first big projects that I've seen since we have joined with the planning commission that's going to help the citizens. And you said you have no idea at all when, when this will be cleared up.
Well, yes, ma'am, that's what I'm saying. I, I could, I could say the date, but I don't know. I'm hoping as soon as I can, maybe within a couple of weeks. I, I don't, I don't have a specific time, but when I know, I'll update some stuff, and I'll even ask the mayor if I could come back and give you a report, say we're ready to go.
Yes, sir. And you would make another press release so that the program would know?
Yes, ma'am, we would, we would, anything, yes, ma'am. A press release, updated flyers, everything, and it'd go out to all the media, and yes, ma'am, exactly. Like I said, I was doing a good job of marketing, and another part of the, it, it happens sometimes, but we're going to get this done because, as you're right, we need to try something up here in, in the county to see what the response to this kind of program would be. And I'm just telling you, I, I've been working on this. I've been excited about this program because I've spent a lot of time working on it, and you know, and it's sometimes you just get a delay, and it's out of, it was out of my hands, and it was so close to when we were.
I have a question for you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
When you, uh, you did a survey in this area, how much response, what type of response did you get from the, the surveys?
Well, that was a, that was a county-wide survey, and we got a, a pretty good response to it. Uh, yes, sir, we did. We got a pretty good response to it, but the way you find out really, if, like, if you could do a survey, but you really see what the need is and what the use of something will be when you actually put something on the ground and try it. And that's what I think it'll be, because I know what's going to happen when we start this. There's going to be people outside the city and other people saying, where are you going to serve us? And the issue is, we got this funding for this pilot project. We want to see how this works, then try to go back. If we develop a constituency or people use it, and we know it's a good deal, then try to apply for some more funding to continue it, you know, for the future.
Okay, the funding that you got for the, for this project, if you can say, how much was the funding, and how long is that funding good for?
Yes, sir. We received through the state, uh, a hundred thousand dollars to do this program, depending on how long the money go, for an eighteen-month pilot project. And so we tried eighteen months, then we looked at the results, and we put all that together, and if it looks like we generated a good use of it, well, then we have the basis to go in and, and ask, uh, the Texas Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division, for some additional funds to at, at least extend that service and maybe, uh, around the areas, but we have to, we have to do what we're doing first.
Right now, it's just confined to the city of Jasper.
The city of Jasper, yes, sir. That's, that's, this program, when we get it started, is going to, those are going to be the people we're going to serve.
Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you, Bob.
And I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much for coming down. Okay, we have item number three, consider for approval, three resolutions for GLO, ERRP, Texas General Land Office Disaster Recovery Reallocation Program, applications submitted for water, sewer, and communication reports. We have, uh, resolution, uh, Greg, resolution one nine six one two one two, resolution one nine six one two one three, and one two one four.
This is vague, because the resolution to go with the application for each one of the three grants we talked about last month.
All right. All right. How much are those for?
Uh, the communications, eight hundred and forty thousand. The, uh, one of the water grants is, uh, two million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and the other one, I believe, uh, one point five seven five million dollars.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
One of these is for the sewer, and one is for the water, and then one is the communications. Can you talk just a little bit about the communications and how much that's going to help the city of Jasper?
The planning commission, Southeast Texas Planning Commission, has a, they have a, um, radio system, and right now, it's being used in Arden, Orange, and Jefferson County, and they're expanding it up to Jasper County. They built the tower in Bune already. They're building one in, uh, over here at the sheriff's office, and it'll go to a digital eight-hundred megahertz radio system. The, um, federal government started pushing this years ago, and, um, the PD would be the first one to be on that radio, and that's to put the consoles and upgrade the dispatch if you're at the PD.
Thank you, Greg. Any other questions, Greg? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion.
We have a motion by Councilman McCroskey.
Second.
Second, by Councilwoman Hilda Grant. No further discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose. Motion passes, you know. Okay, item number four, we have a public hearing on wa- on the water study. Greg?
Anybody? For the public?
Public. Anybody have any questions for, uh, city manager on this water study? Any questions from council? Okay, we'll move on from item number four to item number five. Item number five, we will be using a roll call vote on this. Item number five, consider for approval, amend and update ordinance, Chapter twenty-four, Article four wa- for water. And out of B, amend and update ordinance, Chapter twenty-four, Article five, for the sewer.
Excuse me, Mayor, if it would be okay, if Mr. Kelly could explain what the water study found, or what the water study did. Can you tell us a little bit about the water study? Just for those and citizens that, that weren't at the last meeting, that didn't hear the last meeting.
The council, excuse me, the council voted for us to do the water study, just like the water study. This was brought on by the citizens for fair and equal rates, I believe, is the name of the, Mr. Grant, and this, and this is to, uh, settle our PUC, um, agreement, or not agreement, the agreement with the rate study.
The rate study.
Or the, the rate payers, or our PUC, uh, what do you call it, the, um, petition?
Petition?
I'm sorry. I'm completely blank here for a second. So we had, uh, in synergy during the rate study on, on the water, so, and basically, it showed that the water was, um, was making, my mind, a negative six percent, next, on the water, you can make the, you're right, you tell the numbers, right, a negative six point six four percent, below cost, and the sewer was a negative sixty-one percent. And that shows that that's where the SRMPA funds was being used to subsidize the water and sewer funding to keep water rates. And in the agreement, uh, with the rate payers, was to bring those rates the same inside as outside. And so that's what they did. Now, the inside and outside will pay the same rate on water and sewer.
So there'll be no difference in the, uh, rates for outside or inside?
Correct. The rate payer, if you're a rate payer for water, you'll pay the same inside and out, the same thing for sewer.
And the inside was an increase of seven something, and the outside was a decrease of one something, am I right?
The inside rate went from thirty, thirty-one to thirty-two, thirty.
Okay.
And the outside went from thirty-nine, thirty-six down to thirty-two, thirty.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I hadn't.
Matter, too. That's why I wanted to flip to the right page.
And this, or any other information on the water? Okay, what about the sewer?
Sewer's the same way. If you have sewer outside, you will pay thirty-three dollars a month, just like the residents inside.
Inside and outside, all the rates will be the same, then?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for city manager from the council?
I have a question.
Can we get a, a motion to approve?
I'm a.
Motion from Councilman Hilda Grant to approve. Second?
Are you on number five?
No, we just did the rate study.
You went behind.
Okay.
So you don't have to.
No, we don't have to do anything with the rate. Now, we'll move to number five. Number five is where we will need to vote to everybody, so we'll have to have a roll call vote. So consider for approval, amend and update ordinance, Chapter twenty-four, Article four for the water. Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have a question from the audience?
If I may.
Yes.
Do I understand this correctly, that taxpayers within the city build these systems, fund these systems, do their city tax, and the people outside the city are paying the same rate as the people who are already paying part of the system? Is that correct?
No tax dollar goes into the water sewer, but it's all based off revenue.
So we, outside the city, is.
We use a revenue, it's a revenue-based fund, just like, like, boys.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
On our billing, um, Mr. Greg, is it our city that bills the customers, aren't outside source, sending the bills to the customers?
Our customer service gets everything ready, sends it to an outside agency, they do the bills and.
Send them out?
Send them out.
Okay, um, I don't know how to ask this, but, or mention this. So on my billing, it seems like it was double billed, um, on a current resident when I moved out of the city, and when I got the new bill, it still stated the previous balance. So I'm confused on that somewhat, because if there was a previous balance with no usage and no collection, is that being offset at a total amount? And on budget, when you mentioned in the meeting about revenues coming in, uh, what you collect, is that revenue based off the company that bills, or?
No, they, all they do is the, the billing for our computer, our customer service figures on the rate, so if there was something wrong with your bill, or it's a double bill, it was something we could correct upfront.
Right.
Have you brought that in, ma'am? This, this angel, have you brought that in to check?
I addressed this, absolutely.
You did?
Right. Um, I'm just wondering if it's, I'm not the only one, is my concern, or I wouldn't be the only one, I would say. Because on the first bill, it had a date reading or start date with no ending, and on my second bill, it had the exact same start date with a reading.
They, they read the bills once a month.
Right.
Roughly the same day every month.
Right, but I was curious to begin with, how it even got billed to begin with.
If I've been mistaken, I, I can, we can, we can figure it out.
Thank you, Mr. Nate.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Grant.
You want me to go up here?
No, sir, you don't have to. You just have a question if you want, and if you need to make a statement, because.
It's just a quick statement.
Sure.
Uh, one of, one of the things the study showed was that you were not charging enough for the study. Part of that underlying cause was the ordinance that had been in place where you capture increase to the Consumer Price Index, and, and then you capped it at three percent. Uh, I don't know where that came from or how that was passed, but it had nothing to do. So year after year, if your percentage didn't keep up with your rates, that's why you're in the shape now where you were seven percent behind. you're in the shape now where you were seven percent behind, or six point nine percent behind, and I really appreciate the city council addressing that old ordinance and getting back to cost base instead of being, uh, calculating a number that has nothing to do with the cost of service, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg, anything else? Still, do you have anything to say?
Did you have anything?
No, no.
If, you mentioned earlier that the SRMPA funds were subsidizing the water, that was also the case back when we did the electric study as well, as well as the property taxes. So now that we don't have these funds anymore, n- now the costs are gonna go up, the electric study also recommended that we increase the rates, but the city council did not vote to increase the electric rates or the property taxes, but the water study recommends that we increase the rates, and we're voting today to do that, because that's what part of the settlement is.
Correct.
Okay.
That was the reason why we did the rate study.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, uh, roll call vote, item number five, amend and update city ordinance, chapter twenty-two, four, article four for water rates, uh, let's say you, Councilman Sample? Vote, we need a roll call vote, that means you have to speak.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
No.
Says no. Councilmember McCroskey?
I mean, yes.
Okay, Councilmember, uh, Hildebrand?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussions on this matter? Okay, item, uh, passes, uh, two to one, two no, I mean, two yes and one no. Item B, amend and update ordinance, chapter twenty, twenty, I mean, chapter twenty-four, article five, for the sewer rates, uh, roll call vote, Councilman Sample, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Sample votes no, Councilmember McCroskey?
Yes.
Councilmember McCroskey is a yes, Councilmember Hildebrand?
Yes.
Hildebrand is a yes, motion passes, two to one. Thank you, council. Item number s- six, item number six, consider for approval, police department manual.
Hi, Hildebrand. Um, what this basically is, is, I'm trying to get the police department accredited, to the Texas Police Chiefs Association, and they have a sample policy manual, it covers certain best practices that have to be met, to do those, to get accredited, so I basically adopted their sample policy, changed it to, uh, kind of a, what we need, just the names and different stuff, and there's certain places, like for pursuits, there's five different options, you have less restrictive, all the way to no pursuit policy at all, but that's all it is, is we, us taking those policies so I can go through the nation proper.
Is that all on the thumb drive?
It's five.
Yeah, yeah.
They're pretty restrict, it's pretty restrictive, it's a, it's a lot more restrictive than our current policy manual.
So we're adopting it into our policy?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Scraping the old, getting, doing this one.
Got you, got you, good, that sounds good. Any questions for the chief?
If you had to point out or, or highlight one thing that you tweaked, what would that be, the one thing that just made you go?
I, I don't know, like I said, that the, the policy of the pursuits, because there were like five of them, one of them had, just like I said, no pursuit whatsoever, and I'm like, I don't understand that, I'm, I'm not saying chase for classy misdemeanor, if that's, oh, you know, it is, because that's not entered, we took that, so. Has to be at least a figure or above, or you have to know something, that is going on, or the sergeant can always call it off.
Sure.
Okay, any further, uh, questions for the chief?
I'm good.
Thank you, chief. Okay, I'll, uh, consider for approval, police department policy manual, all in favor say aye?
We need a good emotion.
Motion, motion, we need a motion. Thank you, Councilmember McCroskey. Uh, motion from Councilmember McCroskey, second?
Second.
Second by Hildebrand, now, all in favor? Any further? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, consider for approval, ordinance prohibiting registered sex offenders from residing in and/or ordering within, within a certain distance where children commonly gather. And we got a motion to approve that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, what this basically is, is, I mean, I can't believe Jasper, I haven't, but it is a basically, a ordinance, uh, basically, you can't reside within a thousand feet, what schools say, or child safety, schools, playgrounds, amusement parks, anything, or order within five hundred feet. Um, and also, it gives us the, the teeth to say, okay, before you move somewhere, you have to come visit my sex offender, register, and tell her, hey, this is where we're planning on living, whereas we make sure it's not within that distance, that we, we have some teeth, because right now they can just move wherever they want to, and we don't have any say-so.
We don't have any say-so.
No, as long as they come register with us.
So they can live anywhere.
State, like, when your partners are parole, where your parolees, they have that, they have.
Is this in accordance with the state laws also?
It is, I had our attorney go over it.
Good. That's great, thank you very much. Any questions for the, uh, chief on this matter? Okay, thank you, chief. Okay, consider for approval, can we get a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilman Sample to approve, second?
I'm second.
Second by Councilmember McCroskey, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, chief. Consider for approval, award the recommended company out of bids received for upgrades to the police department, Chief Foster.
Yeah, this is the money I'll allow me to reallocate, the eighty thousand dollars to update the, the police department, uh, I get two bids in, one was for ninety-eight thousand, other one was for eighty-seven, uh, the other one is gonna be, it's a little seven thousand, five hundred dollars more over, but I've got some money that I'm gonna move around to cover that, so I'm just here to ask, go ahead and approve them.
Which two contractors was it, Lam and who else?
Spawglash, I saw.
Spawglash?
They're, they're very large, because they do, mainly, uh, bigger corporation type stuff, but they're branched out into the smaller businesses.
What was the one that we, that we?
Spawglash, they were the worst, and I don't have anything negative to say, but I've never used them or heard anything bad about them, so they were the worst of them.
Okay, any questions from council for, uh, chief? Okay, thank you on that one, chief. Can we get a motion to approve? Approve, motion to approve by Councilmember Sample?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hildebrand. No further discussion on this matter, can we get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, they say aye, so no, no, so, motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, consider for approval, rec, no, item number nine, I'm sorry, check that out, consider for approval, amend and update ordinance, chapter nine, article two, session nine, dash twenty-two, outdoor burning prohibited. Fire Chief, Duckworth, could you please step forward?
Mayor, council?
Duckworth?
So what this is, is amending some of the wording and basically taking out where we called for a permit for outdoor burning, we cannot go above and beyond with the state regulations, so they say you can outdoor burn, they can outdoor burn.
Do we have to have a permit for it?
No, sir.
The state says that?
Yes, sir. Since law for us to give them a permit and charge them for it. So, under, uh, outdoor burning, nine, dash twenty-two, um, let's see, it's, uh, A, I got here, it shall be an offer for any person to call, suffer, allow, or permit any outdoor burning within the corporate city limits, that's provided within this section. Well, B is exceptions, and I got down here, under, uh, two C, I just added to the end of that with the water source readily available. Under three, we took out, uh, some wording there, and also, uh, put in, outdoor burning shall be allowed, as per TCEQ RG dash zero four nine rule.
Those ones that's in red?
Yes, sir.
Okay, those were the changes?
Yes, sir. And, uh, I moved the three A, we, uh, changed the operational permits to, I mean, notice a burn document, that where someone can come in, if they wanna let us know that, uh, a burn's gonna be taking place, they give us their information, and we'll have it on file, and, uh, we'll know about the burn.
Very much, anything else?
I have a question. I have a question, um, with the water source readily available, you wanna add that?
Yes, ma'am, on the, uh, outdoor burning, just when you're burning, when you're, at your residence, you need to have your, uh, water source readily available, and you can't leave it unattended at any time. Uh, attendance is already in there, I just added that, uh, we'll have your water source readily available.
So if this is a water source on, on outdoor burning that they're doing for land clearing, is that what this is, or this is just for residential?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for residential, and do you have any regulations of how close your water source needs to be, I mean, do you define water source, or?
It needs to be within ten feet, or where you can get it right there, if you have five gallon buckets full of water, or you have a water hole stretched out there, something where you can extinguish it if this gets spread.
Still with the hose, I wonder if I'm not, if I may, so you're saying it needs to be within ten feet, so if the faucet is over here, if you have a hose.
I'm just, I'm just using ten feet as a.
I understand, I understand that, but you're gonna make sure that it's close proximity to the fire, okay.
I looked up this rule, the TCEQ RG zero four nine rule, and it's like twenty-four pages long to try to understand this, so, um, it, it's not just a little simple thing, it's a, it's a huge thing, and some cities and counties have serious restrictions, Montgomery County, for instance, you can't burn at all inside the city limits, so, um, I just wanna make sure that nothing that we're, we're voting on today is gonna make it more restrictive for someone to burn, and you're saying that it makes it less restrictive, you're, and, and the permit, where it says, uh, twenty, uh, fifty dollars, the cost of the permit is established at fifty dollars, and maybe trying, uh, changed by the city council, are you changing that?
Yes, ma'am, I took that out.
Okay.
There's no permit, or no permit fee, it's okay, whatever.
And that's according to the state?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we're following state law and doing that?
Correct.
Yes, but the, the water source readily available is not state law, I didn't find, I didn't see.
That's our orders.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't see that.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion by Councilman Hildebrand, can we get a second? Second by Councilman Sample? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
No.
We have two to one, one to four and one no. Thank you. Consider for approval, list of election judges for May third, twenty twenty-five general election. Liz, we need to say anything on that, or we give it to them? Okay, all right, for all of you who don't know, Liz Gerald is our city secretary, so if you have any issues with that, that would be the person that you would talk to. Okay, can we get a motion to approve?
Aye, approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Sample, can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hildebrand, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, which is also a roll call vote, so that means you have to say yes or no. Consider for approval, action approving contract with City of Jasper Municipal Court and Lambarder, Rogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP, uh, fines for, contract for fines and fees collecting services for the City of Jasper Municipal Court, Lambarder, Rogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP, consider resolution authorizing collection fees for, in the amount of thirty percent of debts and accounts receivable.
Good evening, mayor, council, my name is James Guest, I am your lead attorney for delinquent tax collection, also have, uh, Mr. Kevin Dutton, who's also an attorney, actually easily attorney here in Jasper, but I'm a managing partner in Lufkin. This is Sarah Ho, she's area manager, and also Michelle Wood is here tonight, um, and I'll be very brief with this, we're not gonna go through this entire presentation, I will hit a few highlights of the service that we have spoken with Judge Jackson, uh, I, our firm is a real lifeline to small cities, uh, I, I manage cities all over, uh, the collections of these municipal fees and fines all over deep east Texas, uh, our firm is also a national firm, we provide these types of services to cities such as Miami, New York, Chicago, of course Houston, so we're all over the United States, um, and this is a, uh, again, this, these are municipal delinquent fees and fines, we're talking about those people who do not pay their city citations, uh, as you know, there's two major throwaways that go through Jasper, you have one ninety, and also ninety-six, a lot of these account receivables that are outstanding are most likely people who reside outside of Jasper, um, criminal code of, uh, Texas criminal code of procedure allows the municipality to hire a collection agency like ours, a law firm, uh, to collect these, uh, again, delinquent citations, these are over sixty days old, um, the judge has complete authority to give us accounts, take the counts away, uh, in cases of indigency, he has his, uh, full authority to waive our fee, uh, this does not cost the city any money at all, this is a zero out-of-pocket expense, they will likely incur some software expenses that we will cover on behalf of the city, if you do hire us, uh, once we have, uh, a data file, uh, we'll be able to tell you what your portfolio looks like as far as your account receivables, uh, we want all of your old, uh, accounts as well, we are extremely successful in bringing defendants to the court and to work out an agreement, uh, with the judge, so, um, uh, if there is time served, if the judge grants time served, or also community service, and there is no fee to our firm, um, and again, we are, we want every single case that the judge, uh, wants us to work on, so, we're a tool for the, for the court, um, our, our, uh, services, um, we have a, a lo- very large team that, that, uh, will help the city, we have an account manager out of San Antonio, we have call centers throughout the United States, uh, we also have three client liaisons that will be working these accounts and, and also, uh, supporting the judge, uh, and his staff. If you will go to, uh, page ten, I have a couple of collection stories, I just wanna briefly summarize, so the City of Center, um, since two thousand seventeen, we have recovered almost six hundred thousand dollars and, um, resolved over one point two million dollars. Uh, if you turn the page, City of Lufkin, we've resolved, uh, four and a half million, collected about three million dollars, again, this is in the last seven years. Uh, City of Huntington, we've resolved about six hundred and thirty thousand and, and collected over five hundred thousand dollars in the same time period. Uh, City of Zavala, which is a tiny city, uh, I live very close to Zavala, we have resolved over six hundred and eleven thousand dollars and have recovered, uh, almost four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars within the last seven years, so if you can only imagine the, uh, success that we could bring, uh, to the City of Jasper, I guess there is one more that's, uh, very, um, uh, successful client, City of Dieval, uh, almost two million dollars, that's collected, that's dollars in hand to that city, uh, and almost, and over two point six million dollars resolved, so, and again, this costs the city no money, these are accounts that are outstanding owed to the city, uh, we want to work with all of those defendants, uh, that the judge will allow us, again, he is the one who is leading this, and we will work at, at his pace, uh, if you do hire us tonight, it will take three to six months to implement, um, given the software programming and so forth, but, um, we hope that you'll, uh, utilize us, and, um, we do collect for all of the six JP courts here in Jasper County, we also collect for the Jasper County District Clerk's Office, and we also collect for the county clerk's office here in Jasper, we, uh, have a very close relationship with all of those clients, so I wanted to, to point that out as well.
Any questions for Mr. Lambard? I mean, for, sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
This will cost the city.
Not one penny.
We will make money.
You will make money. Um, the, on the resolution, I do wanna point out that, that, that this is an order, it says it's a resolution, it's actually an order that the code requires the city to pass, uh, in order to add that thirty percent fee to the bill, so that's gonna be added to the defendant's bill, and again, the judge has discretion to waive our fee, uh, in those cases of indigency, uh, he has full discretion to do that, uh, another line item here is also, uh, an action approving the contract, that is a government code, twenty-two fifty-four for contingency fee contracts, which this is, so. So uh the harder we work, the more money that we uh uh will, you know, the account receivables that we collect, that's how we, we are paid. So I wanted to just clarify those three uh items on the agenda this evening.
Alright, thank you very much.
I have a question.
I'd like to hear.
This has never been done before in the City of Jasper?
To my knowledge, it has not been done, no, ma'am. We approached the last fee manager. We, she just, we were not able to uh to make leeway with her. So this is a great service for the city, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh Judge Jackson, I'd like to hear from you on this. Uh my question is.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. This is something that you have looked into and you have checked. And this is something that you know that is needed for the City of Jasper, because it seems like that we need to have some collections.
I have, Mr. Mayor. It helps in some ways because the legislature is pushing courts more to the civil side of collections as opposed to the criminal side. Such that, as, as an example, uh when I first started, we used to allot a fifty dollar jail credit for every twenty-four hours you serve in jail. Now, the legislature mandates a minimum of a hundred and fifty dollars for every twenty-four hours, times the number of cases that you have. So for example, if we have an individual in, in jail with four cases and it's a thousand dollars in fines, uh that first twenty-four hours, he gets a six hundred dollar jail credit against that thousand dollar fine. That really makes it difficult not to go towards the civil side of things. Now, we've always been able to use the Omni system, which is a system through the Department of Public Safety, in which anytime you're trying to get some renewable license, maybe a driver's license, it may be a hunting license, then it comes up. And if there is a uh warrant or a fine that's outstanding in a particular locale in the state of Texas, they have to come to that court to satisfy that before they're able to get that license. Omni also works without a state residence in that if you're in Oklahoma, if you were from Texas and you go to Oklahoma and you have fines, Oklahoma will recognize that and will not allow that renewal of that license until they take care of Texas. So those are some of the dynamics that are working. Uh some, every legislative session, there is an effort to make class Cs civil matters and not criminal. And I think this is an attempt by the legislature to set, go halfway, push it more to the civil side, uh less towards the criminal. And that's why the jail credit has increased to the level that it has. And so it allows us to, and also the, the loss of our jail uh here has had an impact with regard to, or repercussions with regard to the way or mechanisms and things that we can do, uh but based on the limits of the, of the sales. We have two that, uh two beds that are set aside on the twenty-four hour basis of the city, but that's all. And anything else could, could cost you more money. So, but you pay for those regardless of whether they're filled or not. So the dynamics are such that it's put us in a position to try to do something else. That coupled with the fact that the fee is an add-on fee and not a percent of the total collection fee. Understand? And I think that's what you were, were getting at. So it should not cost uh out-of-pocket fine money for the City of Jasper. It may enhance it. Uh we'll see. We've been a fairly aggressive court with regard to our telephone calls and those types of things. Uh we, most of our cases are in, that are not paid or in a payment status or in a case of warrant, which is a warrant for their arrest, or an arrest warrant if they never showed up. But we don't have the ability to go out and arrest them us ourselves. We have to rely on law enforcement to be able to do those things. So I think this is a, is a reasonable effort to step out and see if we can do something else. And that's why we recommended it in this case, coupled with one other factor. Mr. Dutton used to be, who is one of the attorneys that would be handling here, used to be the city attorney. He appeared in our court. I have great faith in him, and I think that he will uh work with us in those situations where we need to, to be able to work uh through something with regard to the particular defendant. And I think Mr. Guest will as well, but Dutton is personal knowledge for thirty years. So I think we have an excellent relationship, and I think he has the best interest of the City of Jasper in the things that he is, will represent. Any other questions that you folks may have?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Doug.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that being said, consider for approval, we'll go with item A. Action approving contract, approving, I'm sorry, action approving contract with City of Jasper Municipal Court and Lombarder, Rogan, Blair and Sampson LLP.
Yes.
All in favors?
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
Motion second.
Can I get a motion?
Oh.
Motion for.
Please, sir.
Okay, motion, Councilman Sample, second. Councilman Hildebrand, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And oppose. Motion passes. Item A. Item B, contract for fines and fees, collection services between the City of Jasper Municipal Court and Lombarder, Rogan, Blair and Sampson LLP. Can we get a motion to approve?
Approve.
Approved by Councilman Sample. Second by Councilman Hildebrand. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
No oppose. Motion passes unanimously. Item C, consider for approval, order resolution authorizing collection fee in the amount of thirty percent of debts and accounts received. Can we get a motion to approve?
Approve.
Motion approved by Councilman Sample, second by Councilman Hildebrand. No further, any further discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, at this time, we have item number twelve, which is, we'll be going into a closed session. Closed executive session. It is now six fifty-seven. The City Council and all members being present will enter into closed executive session pursuant to chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, Section five five one, point zero seven two. Deliberation regarding real property of section five five one, zero seven four personnel matters. Deemed appropriate, will take action on the above stated matters. Time is now six fifty-seven. We're exiting to executive session. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.